On our things.
I was watching Fisherman on Halls Pond last week.
Oh, yeah, it's a nice out. Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Killingley Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Karina, you're with us, so why don't you do the roll call?
I can kinda see people. I can hear you. It's just whether or not I can actually see people to do a roll call.
Well, we didn't want you to feel left out, but we can make John do it, too. I'm here.
Okay, I think I see Rodney Carlton.
Here, very good.
Who else do I see there? I think that Paul Archer.
Here.
Okay, and is it Amy Sterling?
Yep.
Okay, and Karina Torrey present. Oh, I made it all, and you guys are 16.
Well, that's because we miss you, so we want you to be part of it all. And Jonathan said that Chris had called in, and he's not feeling well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So first item will be adoption of the minutes of the January 6, 2025, regular meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Motion's made in second to accept the minutes of the January 6, 2025, regular meeting as they were presented. Any changes or additions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Oh, that's right. You must have been on a trip.
I was told to stay home.
Oh, okay. All righty.
No.
So all in favor? We still had a quorum, so we're all set. All right, unfinished business. The first item is the bylaws, but you said you were still waiting to get some things together for us?
Yeah, I'm just procuring those Robert's Rules books.
May as well.
I figured, last time we updated, it was 1982. It can wait another month.
I would think so.
Motion to table the bylaw and procedure review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second to table working on the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission bylaws and rules of procedure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our first item of new business is application 25-1602 of Kenneth and Tammy Crowe for the construction of a single-family residence with driveway septic and well within 200 feet of the upperland review, and this is at 179 Hartford Pike. Want to fill us in?
Do I have to recuse myself? Yes, Paul. I would suggest you table.
We have a quorum without you. You can stay. Now you can stay.
Hold on one second, I'm just trying to share some content.
Yeah, what kind of forum?
No, you did the work.
Hmm?
Three is a quorum.
Three is a quorum, yep, because we did.
And we have four anyhow. Karina's here.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed counting.
Yep.
There is, I believe, some small maps in your.
And actually, I would assume, if he had done the work, it's still appropriate if we had questions that we can ask him as...or not?
Ideally not.
Okay.
Ideally not.
No, I just wanted to know, okay.
When recusing yourself, we had a nice little training the other day.
Perfect.
At the minimum, usually we ask somebody to walk out of the room. I'm gonna leave that up to Paul, but.
All right, may as well. This seat's right there.
Go get some water.
Way out by the water cooler.
Yep.
All right.
We'll try not to forget to have you come back.
We have this manager.
Oh, no, that's fine.
So this application is part of a free split, or a first-time split. It is a current location of body balance, formerly Charlene's Studio on the corner.
Oh, it's the point.
Counting the point.
Okay.
It's a village commercial zone property. They are looking to split off a lot to place a single-family home, I believe for the Crows, to eventually occupy. There is wetlands on the site. You'll see with the site plan that that wetland is a drainage ditch, essentially. There's a cross culvert from Williamsville Road that flows across the property, kind of where the proposed split.
Is this the one that you were wondering about, agent approval?
No, no, there's some other ones that I have. So this one, because of the close proximity, it's within 100 feet. There's no proposed filling, but it's within 100 feet. I did ask the applicant to prepare a commission-level application, because we have guidelines in our regulations that have suggested separation distances. This would be inside of that.
Okay.
So that's the only reason. All I would ask for today, because we don't have someone from the engineer's office presenting it, because obviously Mr. Archer is recused, would be to receive the application and schedule a site walk if you guys deem it necessary.
So just a normal acceptance?
Yep, just a normal.
I can't imagine why you would need a site walk there, because if anyone wanted to look at it, it's as wide open as the days long.
It's right there. They had cleared, I think, some of the trees on it, previously left the stump, so it's very visible. You can see it, provided it's not snow.
So it's just a normal acceptance at this point?
Just a normal acceptance. Normally, after this meeting, I'll send over the plan over to Dave, just to weigh in, particularly on the easement, you know, if there's a drainage easement there, or whether or not we want to request one, or work with the applicant on that.
I would think that would be one of the major concerns there, because if that's a drainage ditch, you've got it coming from somewhere.
Yep.
You gotta make sure that the town still has the right to drain on it.
And we usually ask for Dave to weigh in on all the applications anyways, so.
Let me press how much information is on this little triangle.
What do you mean?
A lot of information. A lot of, you know, a lot of skill is involved in making it. Well, actually, it's very condensed here, that's what I'm making out.
Just make sure that we're turning on our mics, whatever mic you're sitting in front of when you talk.
She was just saying, it seemed like there was a lot of information on it, but basically, it's just, right here's all your flags, that shows you the drainage ditch, so that's all that that is. The rest of it are contours.
You know what, I was looking at this one, and I don't know if it's the same.
Should be.
It just is very, very condensed, it seems.
Well, that's because it's tiny.
Karina, does that help you in seeing the map, or are you just reading off your packet?
No, they must be the people who run that restaurant.
Yep.
I wonder how that's doing.
Yeah, they are the same family that is operating the Crows Nest.
Can you point out any areas of concern, so I can learn from you?
Really, the only thing is, the only reason it's here is because of the drainage.
Yeah.
You do have the option to refer to staff, if you'd like, but it's up to you.
Now, I assume that they've got to go ahead and do onsite sewer because of the moratorium.
So, yes, so onsite septic and well are both being proposed, I believe, for this.
Because of the moratorium.
It might be city water, actually, but.
I do see a proposed well.
Is there a proposed well?
I do see a proposed well.
Oh, yeah, I see it now.
Right there.
I'm working off the screen here.
Yeah.
So, yep, the proposed well to the right of the house, and then you have your septic behind.
Would that be, just out of curiosity, that drainage, that right-to-discharge, is that town right-to-discharge, or is that a state right-to-discharge?
I would need to confirm that. I haven't researched that there. If it is a town pipe, which I believe Williamsville Road is a town road, but we're pretty close to the intersection, you know, of the state road.
So it could come off there, too.
If it is the town's drainage, my clarification, or my research would involve with Dave to see whether or not it's something we want to approach the applicant about formalizing. We try to formalize them. Historically, a lot of these cross culverts, you know, catch basins, discharges, exist.
Right.
And we would want to make sure that we have that all good, especially for future maintenance. Now, a lot of it, it looks like the head wall of it and everything is within the right-of-way.
Yes.
But then, it is definitely flowing across the site, so.
Yeah, my concern, and obviously, we have to look at current conditions, obviously. My concern with that this drainage, this swale that runs through the property, would just continue to erode and widen and everything else if it's not maintained, or...and if it's the town, the town should get an easement and get right to maintain.
And put some water quality basin or something in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna be researching that regardless of your guys' choice here, prior to rendering if it's my decision or your decision next month.
Because it looks extremely irregular.
Oh, yeah, look at how it spreads there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's like crazy.
You can see.
So that would be a concern of mine.
Yeah, it looks like every low spot, it just kind of.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Well, especially, I mean, it's kind of pointed at the proposed well, too.
Yes, it is.
Right, so we want to make sure that it stays away from there before the physical improvements.
So if it's not.
And we need to find out who's responsible for it.
Right, if it's not the town, obviously, that'd be a DOT thing, right?
This is why you want to formalize it? Is that what he means?
Well, because right now, who has the...no, who has...does the town actually even have the right to drain on it?
Right.
And then the responsibility.
It might be just prescriptive.
It could be, very well could be.
That's where we would have to check, you know, either if it's referenced on the deed or on a separate filing.
Okay. I think that information would be very helpful.
Yep.
I think that would be about it. The whole thing is that, right?
As I'm zooming in here, so there is a right-to-discharge identified under volume 121, page 225. I don't know who that is for, but it is referenced as a note on there. So it sounds like it is supported. I'm just reading through the notes here quickly.
Yeah, so it's a matter of who's it in favor of.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because it could be either one.
Correct.
Yep. Some of these roads, too, if there was ever a history of it being a state road, could, you know, be written to them, but then, when we took ownership, it kind of switches.
Which happens a lot. Those old state roads, once they get, once the state kind of lets them go.
Yep.
There's another, although there's no flow really indicated, or wetlands coming off of it. It could be because it's dry, or plugged, or who knows. There's a stone culvert to the west as well of the proposed lot, at the extreme tip, too. So that one does not have a note in regards to drainage, but the drainage easement could be over the property as a whole. Some of the old drainage easements will just generally reference the overall property. So I'll be pulling that and have that information either for next month for you guys, or it would be something that I would consider on a staff level.
Yeah, I mean, I see that other stone culvert, but to me, that's less of a concern. It's not.
Agreed.
It's not being directed more or less at the residents and all the pertinences, so.
And it doesn't appear any hydric soils were identified in that area.
Right, yeah. Okay. Motion to table application 25-1602 without public hearing out without a site walk.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, you said you had some other items, were they to be added to new business, or is it correspondence or something? Oh, wait, should we let Paul back?
Yeah, Paul can come back for right now. Let me find him.
Probably left.
Yeah, probably.
I bet you were taking a nap.
Okay. Well, let's start with the correspondence that is, I guess.
It's already here.
That is in the packet.
All right, this is from the Siting Council application for Windham Energy Center. You want to just fill us in on what it is and how the response works?
So as you guys know, we did orders to regulate and restrict for the proposed battery storage project on Lake Road. That order went to the Connecticut Siting Council, and it gets sent over to the applicant. The applicant has the ability to respond to said document, as they should. At this point, we don't respond anymore. We're not a party yet. The town is looking for party status. There has been some items under the docket number. Now, again, this is docket number 527 for Connecticut Siting Council, so anyone's welcome to look up, read any of this information. They're working through the application to make sure that is deemed complete. If it is deemed complete, I would imagine the town would gain party status, but right now, they've withheld that. So this kind of answer-and-response style of document, it is to the wetlands orders, but also the planning and zoning orders. So I encourage you guys to just read through those, maybe on your own time, if you'd like, but essentially, our document, or our language is in italics, and then the responses are in bold, and they kind of title whether or not they just blatantly accept the order, whether or not it's accepted in part, or if they're appealing it, they don't agree with it. For the most part.
Looked like really just our request that they do some conservation area and stuff is really the only thing that they.
Yep.
Were on the fence on, and even that was not a down-and-write-out, no.
Yeah, you know, generally, they seem to take all of our comments in stride. There's, you know, some elements, particularly like the conservation, right? So they indicate that they'd be willing to talk with the town in regards to the future and that, but they're claiming the Siting Council doesn't have authority over the rest of the property, because they only have authority over the proposed project area. You can see the other responses in regards to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not really going to go over those today, but is there any questions on what's in here?
I don't recall getting responses the last time, do you, Rodney?
I don't know.
I don't ever recall getting that before, so this is kind of neat.
Yeah, I'm sure the NTU one did contain some responses.
And maybe we just sent a song.
But there's really no action, you know?
Yeah.
It's more of just kind of, at least reading through this, it appears somebody, an attorney, someone, has read it.
Yes.
So it wasn't completely.
It's also kind of nice to see that they saw, they at least recognized that there was credibility in our suggestions. We weren't shrugged off.
Just like to make, I think you did a great job responding to this.
I do, too.
And as quickly as what you did, I think, you know, applause go out to you for doing it.
It's true.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No, definitely.
You did a really good job with it.
I mean, it was a busy time of year.
Right.
It was thrown at you quickly. Very, very nice.
As far as other correspondence, so I had received, kind of after I made the packet, two copies where me and Sandy are CC'd on that, on them, for notice of violations for some dams in town. Both of them are hazard Class B dams, asking for emergency action plans. They need updated emergency action plans. Those are for two different properties, one being the Blueville Dam, ID number 6911, the other one being the Elmsville Dam, 6901. And that's all I really have on that. You guys are welcome to look through these at some point, but it's not part of the.
And just for the record, one of them is the town property.
That is correct, yep.
Just so people are aware of that.
The Elmville Dam, 6901, would be the Cat Hollow Dam, a very large stone dam.
And I think that's typically what people would, they wouldn't know it by that other name, just so people are aware of what it is.
I followed up with our engineering team and observed firsthand that they're working through that emergency plan, utilizing HydroCAD and other tools to be able to respond. I believe the state's looking for a 60-day response window, and was told that that would not be a problem.
So all they were actually looking for, then, is a current, updated plan?
Yes.
So it's a plan, not a change to the structure?
Not necessarily a change to the structure. It's to, normally, I've seen some from more of our high-hazard dams. The Bailey Hill Dam, for instance, is a high-hazard dam, where it has all sorts of things in there, in terms of if there's a partial failure or a catastrophic event, there's directions for whoever is in charge of that dam in terms of notification and getting the message out, but also for the town, the town's emergency management staff, to also make sure that the notifications, warnings, all go out. So there's plans for that stuff. That emergency action plan from the owner is what's required to get then transferred typically to the town, so we have updated contact information and everything like that. It just so happens, one of these is us. And the state wants that information as well.
Yep.
Another one that I have here, I actually, it would kind of fit in here. I had a project, proposed project come in, just simply as a zoning permit, and it was for 300 Valley Road. It's quite a small parcel of land, a lot of record. They, at one point, were working with one design team, and then switched to a different design team. And the first design team came with a Joe Thoreau's soil scientist letter that basically indicated that there was wetlands at the edge, or just outside of the property, at the toe of an abandoned trolley line. No real concerns were expressed, or anything like that. The, I'm not sure if that document was ever shared with the new design team. The new design team submitted a septic plan, pretty much what you would normally see for a health department, typical house development, and there was no wetlands on there at all. Now, there's two things kind of screaming out on the review process. We have a wetlands map, which says that these are areas that most likely have hydric soil, wetland soils. That property contains that, okay, based off our soils map. Now, those are historically not necessarily correct.
They're loose, but they're close.
They're loose, they give us an idea, it's enough to say, we need to go check. So I, when I did a site walk, and I looked at it, I looked at the test hole areas, wasn't seeing anything there on that site, but did observe some of the information, based off some of the information, that trolley line, that little edge, didn't seem significant, but I did work with the applicant and their design team to request some information. So they did submit a small report, which I'll have you guys look at.
Just seems like the way that that trolley line was laid out, there tends to be a lot of wetlands right around. No, it's just the way that they filled, and.
Right, correct.
It's from the digging and the filling.
And we have a lot of sewer line in that area and everything.
Yeah.
So there's some photos attached.
CLA's soil scientist, then.
So CLA provided that updated thing, basically indicating it's not a significant system, it is just these depressions on the side of the trolley line. There's some photos, Rodney, in that, which I think helps.
Realize, that's like 150-year-old construction now, that every, seems like it's popping up everywhere around us lately.
There's some cool archways and different things, in different parts of it. There's, I've seen some old, like, cattle passes, even, in some of them, but.
The trolley lines ran, like, the guy up by the pond, that was part of the trolley line. They run all along Valley Road, they run by the old mill there. There were trolley lines all through that end of town.
The River Trail and.
It's all trolley line.
Yeah, I've seen that. I sure remember the trolley garage that was there.
Yeah, that was, yep. Yeah, that was down there.
The question that I have from the applicant, working with the applicant and everything, is whether or not, given that this appears to be a very small pocket of wetlands, not part of a significant system or anything, is whether or not the commission feels one way or the other if staff can move forward just with the applicant on the proposed site development.
Did they show it on the plan, though?
It's not referenced on the plan. It's, I have just those photos there. I can ask for an updated plan, and that is probably one of the things. They did relay if we needed any additional information, that was fine. It does appear to be off the site. Given normal construction, you know, best practices, I think even protecting that little swale is easy, doable, just simply a silt fence and reinforced with hay bales.
I would just like to see it on the plan.
Okay.
Otherwise, you don't have an accurate record.
Well, we don't know a distance.
I agree with Paul. I mean, even if it's slightly off property.
Yep.
They should be able to get you an approximate line.
Yep.
Even if it's not 100%, but there should be something on the record saying, this is where we believe this wetland line.
For the extent of it, and everything like that.
Yes.
Given that information, so if I get that, I'm able to receive that information, are you guys okay with this moving forward on a staff end, assuming that that's something?
Do you want it to come back to us next month? I don't think much matters either way.
No, I don't think it matters either way.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's starting right now.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it matters. So what's your preference?
I think Jonathan has to take a look at it. If the wetlands truly are nowhere near us, I mean, what's?
I'll update you if that's the case.
Okay.
If there's any question, you guys will see it again.
Yeah, and I think that's the best way to go about it.
Okay.
But I do agree with Paul. I think there has to be something on a plan and record somewhere.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's no history.
I think it's easy to get that information, you know, the, it's not really a true site development plan anyways, in terms of what's being relayed on the plan. So I'll reach out and see if we can get something a little bit more spiffed up. That's definitely more of a septic plan than a true site development plan.
Especially if the footing drain is, do you see where it?
Yes.
It got this outlining way over here.
So, I mean, the thing, too, is, I mean, they could ask permission to go on the Butters property, just to look.
Well, they already went on Butters' property.
To take those pictures. I mean, I don't know where that is in relation to the property line.
Right.
So, I mean, if they could get permission to go onto the Butters' property, just to get a approximate, you know?
Yep.
We're not going to flag anything, you know?
Who is this on Valley Road?
It's not a developed piece of land, other than the former trolley line.
Who is it, though?
Some sewer lines that run through that area.
300.
300 Valley Road, it's just past Hygiea on the left-hand side of the road, if you're heading east.
So it's on the downhill side?
Yep, on the downhill side.
Well, yeah, they got to get it around all of this.
So I'll just ask for some clarifying information, and then I'll be able to update you one way or the other.
Then you'll have a better feel.
You'll know, because it will be on the agenda, if that's the case. If that's, if that is the case, obviously, I would have to work out with the applicant if we're going for a wetlands application at that point. Collect a fee, but if it's not.
Right now, you don't know.
I don't know. So let me get a little bit more information, but I just want to get some feedback from you guys on that, so.
How close can they get a footing drain to the property line?
I've, so a point discharge shouldn't be directly to the.
Well, it looks like it's pretty much directly.
That is awfully.
That's as directly as you can get, I would think.
That's just my concern.
Yeah, that is awfully close to the property line.
Yes. When, ideally, we like to see something more of a level spreading and backing it up to do some water quality. Some of those foot drains will run all the time.
All day.
Yep. Others get buried, and you'll never even see anything come out of them.
I was just curious, because how quick, how.
It is something that we pay particular attention to when it goes, when it comes to more congested areas, definitely, like Alexander's Lake, for instance, there's some footing drains that, you know, will go towards the lake, and different things like that, and trying to get those things right, roof leaders, because they run them in the wrong direction, we hear about it, you know? So, that was that one. Other correspondence I had, which I'm guessing.
He was busy this month.
Huh?
We're busy this month.
A little bit. I'm guessing Mr. Archer will probably take a walk to the water cooler again.
We should have grouped these together.
Yeah.
Oh, you've been busy, too.
We are.
Or someone from your office has.
Somebody has.
He probably knows less about this than you think.
No, I know more about that one than I did the other.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Do I have to leave?
80 North Street, yeah.
You don't mind stretching, Paul?
All right, properties on 115 Coomer Hill.
Yep, so we did get an agent, authorized agent application for this. I'm more, uh, just kind of showing you what I've been looking at. I went to, so this is, yeah, 115 Coomer Hill. I went to the site, you couldn't get a more flat site. This is like building on Lego, like a Lego platforms, flat, it is perfectly flat. The, uh, really nice.
Flat and Coomer Hill, I never heard that go together before.
Yes.
Is it one of the old fields over there?
I think so.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
There are wetlands on, on site, um, but unlike the previous application, we're talking about, um, we're talking about all the minimum, uh, separation distances that are identified in the Town of Killingley's.
Oh, so you meet all the requirements.
They meet all of those requirements. So, the, uh, septic system is greater than a hundred feet, uh, from the edge of the wetland. Wells, distances, the buildings, all of it. Even, there are areas identified for silt fence. When you go and you look at the site, um, I don't even know if some of that silt fence would even be needed. You know, it's, um, you know, I'd be more concerned about protecting around the well, when the well's drilled and, and protecting, um, any stockpiling, um, or overcast from site work. Particularly on, I want to say it's the western side of, of the property. Yeah. Otherwise, that, that line that's shown really to the south, um, I'm not convinced that, that, that level of silt fence would be needed, wrapping all the way up. However, uh, it is what's shown on the plan, so I'm going to take the recommendation
It's not going to hurt.
Of, of the design professional there, um, I would, I would, I would deem it more as overkill. But, uh, overall, I'm happy, uh, with the application.
I see that now, it's way at the top before you start down.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna.
Go by the triangle.
I'd be looking to issue an approval on, on this particular one, uh, subject to our normal level of conditions. Uh, I will, as a, a force of habit, I run it by Dave, the plan, even when making these authorization ones. I want to make sure that I'm not missing anything in, in terms of, uh, anything he'd like to see. You know, in terms of the driveway or, um, other drainage. But, uh, that's more of just a report to you guys. If, if for in some case, somebody were so aggrieved that they were to file an appeal, being an authorized agent application, it would come back to you. So that's partly why I'd like to.
But we'd like getting these to see.
Yep.
Yeah.
But if there was ever an authorized agent application, this would be it.
Yeah, if they meet all the setbacks and everything else, I mean, what's the point?
Yep, and we have the report and all that kind of stuff, so, on it, so. That's all I have on that one, unless you had any questions.
Are they building anything else shortly or, or you don't know yet?
Uh, I believe this particular applicant is looking potentially at doing a, uh, first-time split, uh, to this property. But nothing's been finalized. It's forty, about forty acres.
That's what I thought, I didn't know if they were planning other houses or if they were making some kind of a compound of their own.
In talking to the owner, it seems to be maybe just a, a simple division of the property and that was it.
Yeah.
But nothing is set in stone, so.
Doesn't have to be.
No, particularly with, I mean, first-time splits in Killingley and that free split, provided that they provide the documentation and support, it's just a factor of filing it on the record, there's really no review process. Most of, if not all of our local, um, engineers, surveyors, will bring the documentation to us prior to, um, just to have us look at it. In some cases, I've even been, been asked to endorse them as like a zoning officer, um, that, you know, the proposed would be considered conforming. But I haven't had that yet for this one.
Anything else or just bring Paul back?
Paul can come back.
Paul? We should get some like little call, like a duck call. Now you probably won't have anything else that, that you guys bring before us for like six months, or do you have a lot of stuff coming?
We got stuff coming.
Well, it's a long walk, you'll live.
I know. Other than that, I, I don't have much, I've been, uh, working with and checking on a few of our retaining walls across Alexander's Lake. I think we got four or five of those going right now. Those were previously discussed, um, uh, at different wetlands meeting.
It's good to get it going.
The water's perfect for it, uh, right now, it's low, um, and, uh, I have no complaints currently, um, with, with them. The, um, all the guys doing, like three contractors involved, um, uh, on the different sites, they all seem to be following, you know, best practices.
The, uh, so I, I would like to bring something up because, um, I see it, uh, all the time when I drive past.
Okay.
There appears to be some excavation work happening at the new Route 12 storage. And isn't Fallbrook within like a hundred feet of that building or pretty, pretty darned close to it?
I'll take a ride by, I think they were talking about potentially, uh, some, I know there was a machine on site when we did, uh, some of the CO stuff, but there was nothing dug up at the time. I've been down 12 in a little bit.
It, it looks like at least some shrubs are out of there.
Okay.
To me.
Fallbrook I know is on the other side.
The other side of, uh, Cumberland Farms.
Yes, in the car dealership.
Yes.
That's right there.
Yeah.
And we have conservation easements on where Town, Town Line Auto used to be. We have conservation easements up through there. I will check, um, to see if that, if anything's within an upland review area. I know on the other side of Deary's prop, property, which Deary's do own a lot of that land right there, but on the other side of, um, their main building there, that's kind of where some of Fallbrook does go in.
Yeah, and, and I do know, because I, I, you know, I worked at Michael's Market and I, I do know that, that, that area in between Cumberland Farms and, 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 uh, the Route 12 storage.
Yep.
Uh, I do know that drains out to Fallbrook down and back, uh, because that is a, a large depressed area in between the two, the two lots. So I do know that.
I'll take a ride over.
Yeah.
See what.
Yeah, just take a look, yeah.
How much land is with, with that actual parcel behind the building or is it just pretty much the building? I'm just curious.
Behind the building is very, very little.
That's what I thought.
On the side is very little, but I think he bought some land from Deary's, who Deary owns that.
That piece?
That piece that you're talking about.
That comes out to 12?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I think that was owned by Deary's.
Yes.
But I think they bought, I don't know if they did or not, I know Peter Deary had contacted me about selling a piece of that because.
Just make sure your mic's on, Paul.
Because part of their driveway is actually in a right-of-way. When Michael's Market was there.
So there is very, there's as little property there as I suspected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the old Bennys building.
Yep.
Hugs the property line.
Correct.
Okay.
If not, goes over.
Yeah.
It's right, right there.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah, that entrance crosses over the property line, there's an easement there, but I think they were looking to clean that up, uh, on it, either doing a land swap, uh, or, or something.
Now, did they come before us, the, this, uh, before this commission, when that guy was doing it for, the guy before the storage?
For the welding?
For the welding.
Uh, so nothing that we saw, uh, at the time would have triggered wetlands. It was, uh, potentially change of use, but it was all interior.
Gotcha.
That was, uh, we've had a few people look at that building, um, uh, over the years, uh, some applications that have come forward. Some of those that involve some outdoor stuff, um, I don't think triggered wetlands either, but it was, uh, problematic for the zoning at the time. They were, they were looking at some outdoor storage. Currently, everything is indoors, existing parking lot, there's some facelift, you know, stuff, but there was really nothing outside that would have, to me, triggered anything, uh, in our regulations. Not, not like a major change, even the welding shop, everything was contained in that building. So, uh, but, so the, your answer would be no, um, nothing, nothing had brought, been brought before wetlands. But I'm gonna research and do a little site visit down there, probably tomorrow, uh, just to see what's going on.
Yeah, like I said, at the very least, it looks like, uh, some of the, the shrubs and brush have been pulled out in a few sections.
On that edge?
On the edge, yeah.
Okay.
Cause that's, that's right where that depression comes in, and it looks like they removed some of the, the brush and shrubs.
Yeah.
Um, right, right up to that depressed area there.
Okay, I'll have to see if there's any drainage up in there either, because they, they relied on, uh, a lot of historic, um, documentation. I think there's an updated survey for that, um, but I want to see what's called out in there and then I'll take a ride over. Um, not a problem.
I mean, and they might not really be doing much, you know?
No, I, I had it listed on certificate of occupancy that there was certain landscaping that we were expecting because planning and zoning had required some items. There were certain landscaping that was going to be established in the spring, uh, it just would be impossible to do right now. So I'd be interested to see what work is being done.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Anything?
I have a question, um, something I should have addressed when I saw. Oh, sorry. Um, on Lake Road.
Yep.
After the, uh, the cemetery on your right, um, and after the, the middle school property on the same side of the middle school, school property as you're heading north.
Oh, on Upper, Upper Maple Street?
Yeah, Upper Maple Street. There is some, uh, some little ponds.
Yep.
And there were some people, a couple, cutting down some smaller trees along there when I went by.
The Town of Killingley was clearing a drainage easement, I know right there, and it has to do with some of the outflow. Ultimately, if actually Alexander's Lake, some of that Back Bay swamp area crosses under Upper Maple Street and then flows on to, um, some of, uh, um, the prim properties, um, so there.
There's big lakes back there.
Yep.
There are, yeah.
We did have an.
They're kind of cool.
We did have an issue with.
If you weren't afraid to grow an extra toke.
One of the cross culverts there getting filled or dammed by beavers in the past. It was happening over the spring, uh, so it's common that our highway department will do stuff, uh, particularly this time of year, less likely to be detrimental, uh, in clearing out the drainage areas. I did stop when the guys were working there, um, uh, and I'm guessing that's the time, uh, that you're referring to. So that's usually done corresponds with staff. So, um, if it was a major thing, like where they were proposing something big, a big change or anything, it'd be required, especially inside the wetlands beyond maintenance, to be coming here.
This was, uh, it looked like a private, there was a Jeep or just a private vehicle and a, I think there was a, a couple and I thought maybe they were just collecting firewood.
So if there's anything, there's people stopping everywhere, sucking it up, even if you cut it yourself in the yard.
They'll let private people come in and do their job.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, sometimes if our, if our guys leave some trees on the side of the road, people will, people will follow them. Yeah, it does happen. But other than that, I'm not aware of anything in that area. But I, I can take a swing by and just double check.
Yeah, well, this was two weeks ago and I.
Still.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't believe we have a town council liaison here tonight.
Any little stories on town activities to fill us in on?
Uh, nothing that comes to mind.
Any update on the sewer? Expansion or?
They did update the moratorium, um, to give, uh, Dave some more discretion in regards to, uh, connections.
I'm talking about any progression on to fixing the problem?
I'd have to check with Dave. I, I sat in some early ones, looking at a couple different options, uh, even going as far as, um, a satellite, um, location i- if needed, what would be involved, what would be potential costs and everything. I believe there was some bids that came in, um, uh, there might have been a request for, uh, bid for either design or some other aspect of, of that, because I know we had, uh, some, uh, gentlemen and ladies dropping off bid packages, uh, I believe last week here.
So I have an, another question that's related to a project that we talked about, the, um, battery storage, but I don't think it's under our purview, I'm just curious about it.
Okay.
And I, somewhere in my reading, saw that there was a battery facility, battery storage facility burning up and like the neighbors were having to sequester and.
Yeah, I believe like 1,500 people got, um, uh, evacuated and it was in California. I believe that's the one. Uh, there was a pretty large, um, uh, failure, uh, of, of, of systems there. I skimmed through some articles on it, I don't have a full understanding, uh, of all of what happened there. It did seem important to me, so I did pass that, an article, I think it was an ABC News article, to our town manager as well as the town council chair in regards to that, because I know we're seeking party status on ours, so. Beyond that, um, I'm not sure. There was enough, uh, I think there was another one that had to do with, uh, transportation of batteries, but that was in a different country, I believe.
This would have been the one that you saw.
Yeah.
So, we're in the wetlands, so can we talk about what, uh, air quality from a project?
Air quality falls typically under Connecticut Deep Air Division. There might be some correlation, but, you know, with Connecticut Deep, for instance, uh, between air and water, it does happen. Uh, I've been on-site inspections with both, uh, but air quality, uh, to me, is typically a Connecticut Deep function. It's might be something that's brought up more in the planning and zoning process because their regulations are a little broader than ours.
They will consider that.
Yep.
Factor when they're looking, reviewing the plan?
Depending on, depending on the application, yes. You know, in terms of, uh, one update I would have would be, uh, you know, Chase, the Chase reservoir, um, our forester, um, is working over there, um, some of the, um, intention of going through and culling out some of the ash trees, um, on that property, I think we previously have talked about this, um, uh, would help address some air quality because, uh, quite frankly, dead trees are not scrubbing the area as much as the new regrowth would be. So, um, right now there's at least some marketability with the trees that are on site, um, and he's underway, uh, working there. So that's a, a common one we're going and checking on, there are some wetlands on that site, um, and working through there. And as you guys know, we also applied, um, uh, for some grants, uh, for invasive species management, which would also, um, involve, you know, mitigating, uh, any risks to wetlands.
All right, nothing, nothing hot and upcoming that you're aware of?
Nothing else that I'm aware of, um, I know the, I believe the council meets tomorrow night, they look to have a pretty packed agenda, um, doing some board and commission, um, interviews, um, beyond that, I'm not sure what else is on their agenda. Um, and we're moving towards budgets, so, uh, it will be a busy time here.
That time before you know it.
Yes.
Do they have any, excuse me, do they have any applicants for this commission?
I don't believe there's any applicants for this commission, no. I, I'd have to.
I don't think there should be.
I'd have to look.
There's one more alternative, okay.
And I believe I gave the update at a previous meeting, we're going through and auditing, um, anyone that might need to come before us with our other hat of, uh, Aquifer, um, uh, to see, reaching out to some, uh, different entities regarding Aquifer and, and getting them, you know, in front of us. So, if we have that kind of meeting in the future, Amy, um, because I, I don't think you've sat through one of those yet, we would meet typically still at seven o'clock, but we would start with Aquifer. We run an entire meeting through Aquifer, we close that meeting and then we would start up with wetlands if we have, you know, our, our meeting.
Have you had a chance to look at all, if there's anything coming up?
Um, I was looking through some Eric's, uh, stuff in regards to that, but nothing that, it's all existing buildings.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, um, uh, there's a few.
It's way less than you think too.
It's way less and there's thresholds on some of the chemicals and some of the processes where, you know, uh, you know, certain uses might have it if X, Y, and Z variable is triggered. Otherwise, um, we don't have, um, much on our end, just, a lot of it's common sense stuff too. You know, you just shouldn't pollute, so.
What is Aquifer the name for the?
It's, uh, essentially our wa- water quality, right? So it is, uh, the, we have, uh, Aquifers where there's public wells, um, that service so many, um, households. Those areas are mapped, uh, the maps you can pull up on our town GIS, uh, there's a little tab for Aquifer. They're Level As, um, I believe there's four of them in the Town of Killingley. So, uh, they're, uh, I, I can always show you, we do have them on some printed maps down in our office as well. It's a feature actually overlaid over our wetlands map.
Is that it?
That's it, I just need a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, Carino, did we lose you already?
No, you didn't, I'll let you in.
Oh, good. Your grandson must be sleeping through all of these, it's very quiet.